Good afternoon. We're calling a work session, February 21st, Mayor and Council Meeting to Order. And first up on the agenda, we have the Western Maryland Consortium, Amyah Myers, Program Manager.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for inviting us and listen to what we have to tell you what we do and what on our agenda for today. First thing is, we're the best kept secret, and I don't want to be the best kept secret anymore. We're the Western Maryland Workforce Board. I have Allegheny, Garrett, and Washington County. And we have Title I funding, which is adult dislocated worker and youth. I have an opioid grant that we work with. I have career pathways, and I also have ARPA funding at this present time. However, with all this funding, we cannot advertise to get it out there of what we can do for people. Our main function is training. Training for career change or update skills. We also work with the businesses and the businesses to reemploy, rehire incumbent worker, on-the-job training. A lot of wide, different things that we can do with the businesses and also participants. So, again, like I said, the main reason we're here is because we need some help with marketing to get the word out there so we can get people to come in so we can help the town.
So you came here to like in a public forum? Are you looking for some like a monetary like any kind of?
Any kind of help to get the marketing out there that we're here, what we can do. Because the funding, we're quasi-government, so and we're not nonprofit, a 501, 3C. We're not that. We're just a quasi-government. So all of our grants and the different fundings that I go after, advertising is not out. I cannot spend any money on advertising at all.
So it's literally word of mouth.
Okay.
So that's where we're, I'm looking for the help for things.
So in 98?
Yes, Chris.
That was my first.
One day in 1998.
That's right. That was my first professional job.
Yes.
After I left my.
With Peter Thomas.
Yeah, after I left my stipend employment out of college. And that's what led me into being interested in local government. I left and worked for local government and then got into this. So very familiar with your services. And I think at that time, the trucking trade industry locally was still in its sort of infancy. And Western Maryland Consortium sort of, you know, headed that push because contracting employment at that time was going down while trucking industry employment was going up. And other entities, educational institutions around the county sort of took those good ideas and ran with them, you know, in their avenues and available funding sources, if I'm not mistaken, which is why you have those good programs at places like HCC and other locations now. I think the two questions I would have is, one, as it applies to getting it out there is, where are you located?
Thirty-three West Washington Street.
So you're still there.
Still the same place.
And so I think that that's an important thing for us to be able to get out in a much more visible way in our downtown, because a lot of people drive by and they think these places are just filled with stuffy offices and, you know, not that service oriented. So one way I think we could help is that.
And since you brought that up, we are trying to look for another place on the first floor to get out there. So my understanding, I talked to Emily about, my understanding is you bought the bank and you're moving that second floor to the bank, the old building. So we talked about us maybe running the top, the second floor. And we would be together with American Job Center. Doors is moving in there. Department of Rehabilitation is moving in there. It would actually be a one-stop center. And the Department of Social Services is right up the street. So, you know, it's a nice handoff and working together. So that was, I'm glad you brought that up because that was.
The second question I have is, you know, in 99, it was how to convert construction workers to truck drivers, right? And I guess for me, it would be very important for us to understand and probably the public listening, you know, what's the big thing today? Is it, you know, we have all 16, you know, multi-million square foot warehouses going up around the county. Have we been able to make those connections between those employers and your offices so that we can, you know, convert workers and re-educate for those opportunities?
We do work with economic businesses and as they meet with people, we're in the meetings also to see what their needs are and let them know about the on-the-job training, any kind of incumbent worker training, anything that they would need, and the clientele. Where we're running into trouble due to COVID and everything else that's coming along, we don't have a lot of clients. That's why I want to get out there again and advertise and market. We're here and have all this funding, you know, we're here to help.
Yeah, I think for us, it would be good to understand, because I imagine, you know, so, you know, let's say five years ago, you know, entities like yourself are much more able to communicate to Bowman. You know, employment centers that are large employers that are of a much more local nature, I imagine none of us could say who the employer is at the warehouse out, you know, the North Point Warehouse out of Basil Boulevard. You see an Amazon symbol, but, you know, my kids think that's an Amazon store, but I have to explain. That's just a, you know what I mean? Like, that's just a warehouse that Amazon's using of some private party with some third party to put things in there that other parties then, you know, move to your doorstep. It isn't as if, you know what I mean? You go and you say, "That's Bowman Trucking, and I know where that's at, and that's the facility." So anything I think that we could do to facilitate these various large-scale warehouse entities where these are much more far removed employers, you know what I mean? And get them into the community and say, "Hey, we know you're based out in Nebraska somewhere," you know what I mean? "And you're some conglomerate entity, but how do we put a local person, you know, in your office?"
And that would be us with the Workforce Board. We would, we meet with all the employers and let them know what we have, what we can do. And with the Department of Labor of where the jobs are coming and going and what's gonna, what they see in the future of what it's gonna be. So we work closely with all that. Our main focus, I'll be honest with you, is Title I money. I've been with the consortium for 28 years. And it used to be we only had Title I money. I have gone after, I have an opioid grant, we have the ARPA funding, I've had career pathways. So I go after to bring back to the city and the county, in all three counties. And when I go after, if I don't spend it, then I can't go after more to bring back in the county. And I just don't want that to stop.
Is there any in Best Hagerstown money that, like, because I know that there's a lot of the programs for like?
Yeah, I was gonna, have you talked to any staff about the interest in the second floor of the Hager Center and?
We did. In fact, I took a tour of it with your business rep over there.
Doug?
Yes, yes. And then that's the last I heard.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to wrap that all into like one discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll touch base and have that discussion.
And I think then beyond that operationally, like, so whenever, you know, Jill's office with the city and the county's EDC office get together and we know of, let's say, what, Hitachi, is that a good example?
Yes.
Right? Whenever they come in, like, your office should be like one of the first people.
Yes.
You know what I mean? At the first meeting that says, "Hey, what type of employment do you need? You know, how can we, how can we direct the folks that we're going to, you know, to service in your direction?"
Absolutely.
I don't know if that's occurring, but.
Do you use social media?
We do. We do have Facebook and we do have an Instagram. But again, you know, I have a limited staff and limited things that we can do. We do post job openings and different training things on there and success stories. We have a lot of great success stories we post on there. But we even have a website.
Like Main Street's blast. Like when Main Street blasts out what's happening downtown, like maybe.
Yeah, you're part of Main Street.
A great scene now that runs our social media. They definitely pushed the word.
It's just a matter of us, I mean, I, you know, I feel like I belong to a lot of different Facebook businesses, businesses, right? And I just didn't know. So while I have not gone through your program, I know many people who have and have been extremely successful and pleased. So it's an excellent organization. I mean, I'm happy to share with my own followers and we all have, you know, we all have a good following to be able to help you in that way.
I just think if you're gonna, if like if you're looking for space and you're gonna be downtown, that we need to make you as visibly user-friendly as like the home stores.
Yes, absolutely.
You know what I mean? Something like that should be like the thought behind what we do.
Yes, yeah.
And you say, you know, we're in the State's Attorney Building. It's, you know, some of the people that we deal with are, oh, you know, so.
Oh, and I can tell you this, the fourth floor has some problems right now. And we just, we need to be in a place where.
More accessible.
Yeah, for the people.
I definitely think that there's opportunity there, many different avenues. I'm glad you came in.
Yeah.
Really glad you came in.
Thanks for having us.
Well, thanks for having us. I appreciate it.
Well, I'll have staff reach out here in the next week.
Okay.
And set up something. And we'll just combine all of that together into, I'll get all the right people in the room with you and just talk about all of that, all that stuff.
That's great.
You are quite the hidden gem.
Yeah, as you said, I don't want to be the best kept secret anymore.
Yes, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Maryland Department of Environment, MDE, Rural Maryland Funding Water Division, Nancy, Director of Utilities. Hi.
Hello. Scott asked me to circle back around. And so what I did is prepared some charts to kind of put things maybe into a little better perspective. But I want to note a couple of things. When we're looking at these charts, they do not include any improvements to the R.C. Wilson plant, and they do not include any improvements to the wastewater plant. The charts, the projected rate increases, they do not include any increases that would be needed for the day-to-day operations of the plant, the operating budget. And in the last several years, we've seen our costs increase anywhere from five to 15%. I also wanted to note that the Phase II R.C. Wilson, the Phase II R.C. Wilson Transmission Main Project does not address system growth. It addresses reliability. Phase III would only minimally address growth. Phase IV is where growth would be addressed, but only if the R.C. Wilson plant was upgraded. I also wanted to note that when I was putting these figures together, I assumed a 20-year debt service, a half of a percent annual loan service and interest fee, which is actually a low number, 30,000 accounts, and I used estimated user fee revenue for FY '24 to estimate a rate increase as well as, I also looked at kind of a 12-year plan to restore some portion of restricted cash, what we oftentimes refer to as our benefit fee dollars. So with that, Table 1 is a project summary, pulls all of the tables together. And if we were to do all of these projects, we would have an estimated revenue requirement of over 5.2 million. I wanted to point out that a 1% rate increase using FY '24 projected revenue is only 130,000. We would need 5.2 million to cover just the debt service, which would include interest and fees and restoration and putting some money back into our restricted cash. The annual increase is estimated per customer at $173 a year quarterly, being, of course, $43 on a quarterly bill. Once again, I have to emphasize, this does not include any rate increase that would be needed for the operating budget to cover those increases in electric and chemicals and other utilities. They're the biggies for us. This would just be to look at the capital, you know, doing these capital projects. So the next several tables, break it down per project. Edgemont is there first. I incorporated Brickner into it because without Brickner, we can't, we don't have a plant to treat the water. And so you can see the numbers. These are estimated numbers based on the best available information we have. We would anticipate for just Brickner, Brickner and Edgemont, a 12% rate increase to cover the debt service as well as looking at some restoration of the benefit fees. Wanted to note here also that Hazen has reached out to MDE to coordinate with city staff a planning and design meeting to see if we can nail them down on the PMP just a little better. That was something that was asked at the last meeting. So if I move to the R.C. Wilson Transmission Mains, you can see they're broke down. Phase I was already completed several years ago. It was 900 feet of pipe, 450, two runs of 450 feet of pipe with a whole bunch of valving at the water plant. And you can see the three phases and the impact on, what I believe the impact would be on rates basing it on FY '24 projected revenue. Once again, it would restore some of the benefit fees. This particular calculation puts it out 13 years. The next table is MAC, the MAC tank. You're aware that we've made repairs twice to the MAC tank. The tank, you know, based on the engineering reports after the last repair, identified the tank as being in pretty good shape and we would be good for a while. But I also think it's important to point out, when we go back to my recommendations, that that work is an in-kind replacement. It's a tank for a tank. It does not look at pump station three or fire protection in the airport region. Does not, it doesn't consider, it doesn't take into, that project just replaces a tank with a tank. And that part of our water system, that tank is as old as I am, you know. So it's vastly approaching senior citizenhood. But I think.
Tank senior.
I'll be six decades this year, so the tank and I are pretty close in age. So.
All righty.
But, so I think where we get the greatest benefit with our capital dollars is completing a study, looking at that zone and saying, it's the only thing we need, a tank for a tank. And lastly, I have the Zone 5 improvements. One of the things that I, you know, want to add with the Zone 5 improvements is, Zone 5 improvements will look, kind of look at a reconfiguration of Zone 5 and to help address water quality issues associated with the disinfectant byproduct rule, chlorine residual, and then nitrification. This project also, the study will look at our ability to better, to provide better fire flow protection in that zone. And it doesn't just look at the hospitals. The 12- and 16-inch water main that go out Jefferson are equivalent to the transmission mains that supply the base zone, and they have a fair amount of age to them. So with that, I'm gonna circle around, back to the memo and staff, you know, what staff would suggest is the way to attack these projects. And we do recognize the importance of each project and the benefit of each project to the water system. But where we believe we get the biggest bang for our buck as far as the operation or maintenance of the water system is with completing at least Phase I and hopefully Phase II, I'm sorry, Phase II and Phase III of the Transmission Main Jobs, that would be our number one priority. Our second priority would be the Zone 5 water system improvements because it addresses long-term pressure and flow deficiencies in that area. And it allows us to reconfigure that zone as needed and upgrade the other infrastructure, pump station six, as well as the PRV. We would put the MAC tank next because of the issues that we experienced in Zone 3. And then Edgemont and Brickner, we would rate fourth in this list of projects. One of the things staff often, my staff often says in water is, we gotta take care of the mothership first. And that's the R.C. Wilson plant and the Transmission Mains. Brickner will only supply about 10% of the needed water. And if we lose a main or we have something go wrong over at the plant, we're really down. So that works into, you know, part of the reason for the recommendations being structured the way they are. These recommendations and the information provided does not in any way, shape, or form. I'm not the Chief Financial Officer and, you know, I don't, Michelle oversees bond issues and that sort of thing. So the way I put this together is just strictly looking at the impact on the water fund. Does not look at the impact on the total user fees because I didn't include anything for wastewater in here. Improvements are needed at the wastewater plant. We haven't done anything major down there other than the Cinegro, the pelletizer facility that Cinegro runs for quite a few years. So, you know, it doesn't look at issuing, you know, debt service and bonds from a total city perspective.
So any questions?
I mean, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I like the chart, the way it breaks out in the green section, the MDE loan. So the bipartisan infrastructure law loan, that's, that's, that's actually, I believe that's a loan forgiveness, right? Which is what you have shown here. Is that, when you say the MDE principal forgiveness, are you reflecting one equaling the other?
The principal forgiveness applies to the, if we're looking at Edgemont, applies for.
Well, the whole chart, this chart.
Yeah, the, all of the principal forgiveness actually applies to the base loans from MDE. There's two sources of loans, an MDE loan and the bipartisan. The principal forgiveness, MDE is essentially saying on the loan from MDE, but not necessarily, it's not necessarily tied to the bipartisan infrastructure law. It's tied more to the base loan from MDE.
So I was given the impression the bipartisan infrastructure law loan was the more pointed loan program associated with the principal loan forgiveness. I mean, it doesn't matter, so either way.
Either way, yeah.
Yeah, that's the amount. And then the 2 million for the MAC tank, that's, like, that would be more directly tied to the MDE loan.
Correct.
Forgiveness program. So you're looking at that as possibly like hopefully getting high up on that list and getting it as a grant, right?
Yeah, there would be a bond issue. And after, usually it's after five years, MDE then, sometimes it's five, sometimes it's 10.
They told me it was 10.
Yeah, sometimes it's five, sometimes it's 10. MDE then would, you know, forgive the principal, yeah, the 2 million principal.
So do they hold the bond or do we? And if it's us, does that mean we cover the interest cost?
We pay the interest and we pay the admin fees for the loans.
Okay. I think maybe the same question I have for Edgemont that I have for the R.C. Wilson Transmission Main Project is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears, as it applies to, you know, your primary source that you're going for, your, the objective there is to not only stabilize that source, the ability to provide that source, but also to double the delivery capacity.
From, with the Transmission Main Project?
Right, from 10 to 20.
That's if we do all of the phases. The Phase II and Phase III does not do that.
Right, but I mean, the impetus for doing that is because at the end of the day, your expectation is because Edgemont's only gonna provide, what, 800,000 gallons a day, regular, 4 million gallons a day maximum. So like it or not, and it kind of like gets, in my thinking to the comments made by some of the county commissioners, you know, of their expectation. made by, by some of the county commissioners, you know, of their expectation, they were able to provide water to this broad swath of development that they'd like to approve for growth on our system, is what's the guarantee? In other words, we're not going to go down these phases without the thought process being the end result. We're going to double the capacity of the system. It's operational capacity, right? Ten to twenty. And I guess I don't want to, like, head down that road and get caught in the quagmire of deliberative discussion by MDE on whether or not that's going to be approved. In other words, just as we are sitting here now with Edgemont, sort of years removed from our plan of action to simply fix the reservoir, put Brickner back in, in operation and, and move on with providing service, I don't want us to also start down these phases of RC Wilson and have MDE deliberate in any long duration of going from ten to twenty. I just feel like we should know that, like, upfront. Because forty-five million's a lot of money to start that, start down that road on. And then MDE say, yeah, well, you know, we don't know if we're going to let you go to fifteen or twenty.
Our current permit is fifteen with an eighteen max.
Right.
So the first phase of this project actually addresses some, what I'm going to call, system deficiencies. We can only push out so much water because of the back pressure. So by upsizing the lines and then also replacing the valves out to the end of Fitton Avenue, Clear Spring Road, actually, actually allows us to get closer to pushing out that fifteen. Right now, that's really difficult for us.
Could you reference where that is again?
Fitton Avenue, Clear Spring Road.
Okay. I just want people to understand that, that what we're doing is we're spending a lot of money, right? That's going to be based on the full faith and credit of the taxpayers of this city, just this city. On being able to provide lots more water to areas that are way outside of this city that we have no obligation to and that aren't, aren't obligated for the full faith and credit of the debt service on that.
The, the reason the, the price tag on the Phase Two is five million is because it only goes out that far.
And, and I think it's more important as well to point out, and I think it's why you, you see these numbers in the chart and, and you see, 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 see the increases to the dollar per customer figure that it is, is because ten years ago, we would be deliberating on this subject with the expectation that out in these areas where we're being asked to push our system to, you have hundreds of customers. However, that's changed, right? So now we're, we're building, we're building big lines to go out to these far reaches for what is arguably much less customer base, right? Because you got a big warehouse there that uses ten thousand a day, whereas you expected you were going to have five hundred houses using, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand a day. And that's, so, so we don't have as many customers to spread that number across, which means at the end of the day, all of the people living in this city are going to be the ones that bear the higher brunt of that cost per customer to go out to those areas where there's less customer base, right?
And I did, yes, and I did use current customer base. I did not use, I did not apply any growth to it. So that's, it is current customer base.
It's just, there's not going to be as high a return on investment. Nowhere close.
Not close.
And, and, you know, with all due respect to the gentleman that, that made the decision to build, you know, the county's wastewater treatment plan in the nineties, I don't want to be in that position to have to take thirty-three million dollars from the taxpayers' general fund and pay back those types of system improvements because it couldn't meet the obligations of that full faith and credit.
So.
Which is what happened.
So that argument, oh, it's not an argument, but that observation is one that it kind of epitomizes the discussion the county administrator and I had on Friday about why it is so important to get both elected bodies in a room to educate on exactly what you're talking about. And now it is just a matter, and, and the county administrator and I are both looking at March, not on a meeting day, it would be a separate, it would be a Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, to meet at RC Wilson to give both bodies an opportunity to tour that plant because there are, I'm sure, probably more than not, have never been there before to see how it operates. And then to have this type of discussion based upon these numbers that I think very clearly state what the financial impact is for five very important projects over the course of the life of the water system and look to have a better understanding between the bodies as to how this, this financing could be accomplished. And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And I think it's, I think it's more important to say on our life.
Right.
Of the water system, right? What we need to do over the next twenty years.
Right, because it is.
It's going to be here long after us, so, you know what I mean? So we need to do for it.
I am hopeful we'll have that date set here in the next week.
Just, just wanted to, I, I would just say that we very firmly would be committed that whatever we're doing and funding on out-of-water fund is not going to be paid for the taxpayer base, that we're doing it and recognizing that the, that the customer utilizing, that we're going to be going down that path, because there's going to be customer rating, not general taxpayer.
So I, I guess, you know, to circle back, you know, what, what I'm looking for, what staff needs direction on is, is prioritization. And, you know, we would like to prioritize the Phase First, Phase Two of the Transmission Manes as well as the Zone Five. And it's not that this funding will go away, it'll, you know, but I think we need to be transparent with MDE that, hey, we're, this is, we're going to focus. We can't, one, we can't get all of these designs done and be construction-ready by December twenty twenty-four to begin with. But we can focus on these two projects and then move, you know, and then move forward with the other ones at such time that is appropriate both for the water fund, for the water system, and, and of course for, you know, our customers. But, you know, we're going to, you know, I think it's important that we're transparent with MDE and, and just like I said, looking for direction on that.
Are we trying to prioritize them because we believe that MDE will only provide funding for a specific number of them and not all of them?
No, I'm trying to prioritize them. How, my thought process did not go back to MDE, was not based on MDE funding. My, my thought process was based on O and M of the system, looking at being able to, you know, for example, when we have a repair that we have to do on the Transmission Day main, it might take us, depending on how long we're down, three or four days to get the tanks at the West End filled back up because of the back pressure at the plant. Can only push out so much water based on the size of the transmission main. So I'm looking at O and M and system reliability.
And O and M means?
Operation and maintenance of the system, system reliability. And, and then, you know, one of the other things with the Zone Five that I'm looking at is known deficiencies in the system and trying to address those known deficiencies. We have not invested really any money in Zone Five on, in the twelve, the sixteen, the twelve or the sixteen going out Jefferson and Pump Station Six or the Chusville PRV. I've been here since two thousand and six and we really have not invested any money in that, in that part of our system.
Well, you're going to need to have, you're going to have to have that in place, I assume, for reliable transmission of Edgemont and Brickner into the system, right?
Um, so Pump Station Six pushes out to the Chusville PRV. Part of what we do is Pump Station Six pushes, pushes out to the Chusville PRV, which then pushes it to Zone Five. And then we also push on out to Smithsburg, yeah. So, so it, part of it is pushing out to Smithsburg, but then the other part of it is Zone Five. And that's why we're also talking about reconfiguration of Zone Five and where, how the zone is configured now and looking at how we can do that better.
I don't have any preference on how you rank them. They all need to be done. I'm, I'm more, I'm more interested when we get to the point of who's going to pay for which.
Right, that part. You do, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
The best part of your job, right here. Best part of your job, this part right here.
Next up, we have the preliminary agenda review. Seven PM regular session, all you guys know that. Call to order, invocation, our pastor Randy Buckman will come in and do that. The pledge to, the pledge to the flag, announcements, rules of procedure, effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty, use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for March is Tuesday, March seventh, State of the City at seven AM, okay? Tuesday, March seventh, work session at four PM. Tuesday, March fourteenth, work session at four PM. Tuesday, March twenty-first, work session at four PM. And Tuesday, March twenty-eighth is our regular session at seven PM. We have citizen comments.
Okay, go ahead, you don't have to read, you didn't have to read any of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
I was going to skip that.
Just making sure.
The minutes, January tenth, twenty twenty-three, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. We have the consent agenda. A, engineering, number one, change order for Fairgrounds Park Police Athletic League roof replacement. Dynamic, Dynamic General Contracting LLC, Millersville, Maryland, thirty thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty, thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, sorry, y'all. B, information technology, Cisco Duo two-factor authentication software. Somerset, New Jersey, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. VX Grail hardware support renewal. Navenspire Inc., Annapolis, Maryland, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-two cents for public works. We have a street closer for St. Patrick's Day, five K, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Utilities, light blanket contract for underground utility locating service, USIC locating services. Indiana, Indianapolis, Indiana, twenty-five thousand dollars. We have light apartment substation surveillance equipment. Spiker Security Services, Hecarstown, Maryland, that's twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and eighteen cents. Also light bucket truck replacements, Altech Industries, Inc., Birmingham, Alabama, that's five hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Fifty-five inch bucket truck, three hundred.
Foot.
Foot. Thank you. I was about to say fifty-five inch bucket truck, that's like Gary size.
You can just do a very little.
Please don't let me forget that.
Very little height, about six, about six inches off the ground.
A fifty-five foot bucket truck, three hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We have a forty-one foot bucket truck for a hundred and ninety, one hundred and five thousand dollars. Emergency procurement, compressed air supply line replacement, Quad State Air Compressor Sales and Service, Green Castle, PA, that's twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. We have water, annual service contract for Hawk Analytical Equipment, Hawk Company, Loveland, Colorado, nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Unfinished business, approval of ordinance, purchase of Wakefield Road property. And we have new business, ordinance, introduction of ordinance, two hun, two thousand and twenty-two land management code amendments, introduction of an ordinance, two thousand and twenty-two comprehensive rezoning, approval of a resolution, parking lease with the State of Maryland, Department of Education, Division of Rehabilitation Services, approval of a resolution, developer agreement for indoor turf facility at nine seventy-four Memorial Boulevard with Eastern Sports Management LLC, approval of rates for the Potteville Pool, two thousand and twenty-three season, approval to increase the pool management contract amount for the two thousand and twenty-three season, approval of Appalachian Regional Commission Art Grant application, approval of Chesapeake Bay Trust Tree Planning Grant, approval of citywide mowing contract, twenty twenty-three, from March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three through December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, approval of addition of two full-time civilian positions at Hecarstown Police Department. And we have the city administrator comments, mayor and council comments, and then we're adjourned. And next up, we have Chesapeake Bay Tree Trust Tree Plant, Planning Grant, Jim Bender, Assistant City Engineer.
Good afternoon. The Chesapeake Bay Trust administers a large pot of money that the state allocated for tree planting. They have a goal statewide to plant five million trees by twenty thirty-one. And so we applied for this grant last year with the thought that we would plant more street trees and possibly also do some plantings in our parks. And we were awarded funding last year. We are on track to plant the hundred and seventy-five trees that we said we would in our grant application. They reopen this grant program every year and basically staff would just like your authorization to, again, apply for this grant. We have twenty-five thousand dollars set aside in the Stormwater Protection Fund just for tree planting that we would use as our match. And we're still crunching some numbers to try to figure out how many trees we can plant this coming year. But I think we'll probably end up requesting about seventy-five thousand dollars from the state.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have pool rates for twenty twenty-three season, Eric Deike, Director of Public Work. Eric.
Hello. Most of pool rates are staying the same. The only thing we're doing is tweaking a little bit on the, on the pool party rentals. Before it was like an hourly rate, depending on how many people were coming to, to the events of the party. We're simply tightening it up a little bit. We're saying it's a two-hour rental. There's a little bit of an increase before, if you had one to fifty people, it was a hundred and twenty-five an hour. So two hours would be two fifty. We're taking it to three hundred. Same for the next rental. If you rented a pool for two hours, it'd be two fifty, we're taking it to, or three fifty, I'm sorry, we're taking it to four hundred. And the last rate really doesn't change, seventy-six to a hundred people, it's two fifty an hour before. Now we're just saying five hundred. So it's a little bit of an increase, we're just trying to tighten that up a little bit, make it more clear. All the parties last year were at least two hours, some were three hours. So we just want to make it clear, it's a two-hour party, that's what you're going to rent it for. It's similar to what Washington County does at their pool also. So it's small change, but it's minor.
Good, thank you.
Bring on summer, come on.
Appalachian, she's running. Appalachian Regional, Regional Commission, funding requests.
Good afternoon.
You're not.
I know, I'm filling in for Joanna Wu, she is still with us, she's just under the weather today.
I was looking forward to that first, first time haze.
It's like I just got on the elevator.
First time hazing we're going to get to do.
No, 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 this is the sixth week, she's, she's still with us.
She's good.
So it's the time of year when we are invited to submit requests for funding from the Appalachian Regional Commission, which is a federal funding source, usually for infrastructure enhancement projects or projects that support economic development, job creation, things like that. There's a whole list of objectives and strategies that are sent out each year that if you pick a, request a project, you have to show how it meets up with those criteria. And so in case some of you are not familiar with how this works, the Tri-County Council of Western Maryland is the entity that takes all the applications from Washington County, Allegheny County, and Garrett County for this program and makes a decision on who gets to move forward. And in our county, every, all projects being requested for funding in the county, including county projects and municipality projects, funnel through the county commissioners before they get to the Tri-County Council for the county commissioners to rank projects and send the ranking on. And then also county commissioners serve on the Tri-County Council, so they're also involved with the ultimate ranking of these projects. And so if we, if our projects become top-ranked proposals, we're invited to submit a full grant application to the ARC and that, that information we'll get in the fall, is how we, how it flushes out. The matching requirement is fifty percent. The matching requirement is fifty percent and federal funds cannot be used to be, match the A.R.C. requests. So we, we, every year staff get together to try to figure out what would be projects that not only are consistent with the A.R.C. proposals, but that also might be projects that the Washington County Commissioners might feel are of value to the community. And so we did that, and that's why in the past we've done a lot of requests for water and wastewater because we know that is a priority for the county commissioners. But we're, we're still working through some prior grants from A.R.C. for wastewater work. So we didn't want to pursue any more of those this year. We didn't want to inundate ourselves. So we have three proposed projects for your consideration that you need to decide if you do want to forward and what your priorities would be, because they want to know our priorities, even though they make their own priorities. They still want us to prioritize what we send over. And so what we thought was, we think that the county would have support for updating the community city center plan, which we approved in twenty-fourteen, so it's almost a ten years. It was a ten-year plan and we're almost getting up to it, and that was the plan that made the recommendations that led to, well, didn't lead to, but supported leading to the Maryland Theater Expansion, the U.S.M.H.'s expansion, the U.I.P. project, and then the Hagerstown Cultural Trail and a variety of other things that we've been working on in these past ten years. But it would be good to, to take a new look. That's been a priority of this council with the strategic plan. So that's why we're suggesting we apply and request a hundred thousand dollars and match it from a future operating budget with the city. A second project, one that we've been trying to gain funding to do, would be a complete upgrade of the Hager House Visitor Center space and then create new and modern interpretive exhibits. And that, there, there is an objective in A.R.C. that would support that. We're requesting a two-hundred thousand dollar A.R.C. grant request to be matched with a hundred thousand from the state from the Maryland Heritage Area Program, one hundred and twenty-five thousand as a city C.I.P. project in the future. A third project, this is, there was a change to state law about what kind of C.D.L. training our truck drivers, which includes the fire department, have to have. And so the trick is finding the money to pay for this enhanced training that is required. And so we're suggesting we request C.D.L. training for city staff. At this point, there's fourteen positions that need that training to attend H.C.C.'s C.D.L. training, and it's two different levels, certain kind of trucks, you have to do more training than other kind of trucks, so it's different amounts. But I've learned from H.R. that the total amount of what those fourteen would need is thirty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. And we're suggesting we match it with what we're paying these attendees in salary as they attend the training. Suggesting that would be the match.
Could you not use the Western Maryland Consortium for the C.D.L. training?
I don't know. I just know that we use H.C.C.
No? I'm just curious.
I think, as of right now, as of right now, I believe.
Where she comes. Sorry, here, where she comes. I didn't mean, Candy started it.
With the changes that were done and with the requirements that are in place, I don't think that Western Maryland Consortium currently has a program yet that would meet those new requirements.
Okay.
And H.R. has looked at several places trying to get better pricing. And again, Class A versus Class B, we got public works, we got water, wastewater, fire. So we have a lot of staff. And it's several weeks.
That need the upgraded training.
It's for people who, especially new hires, if you hire somebody and they don't currently have their C.D.L.s and they have to get one, Class A versus Class B, there's a definitely significant difference in the amount of time that they have to now go to these classes before they can pass, as well as the dollar amount.
Okay. Just trying to come to some business.
Me too. We've been thinking of all kinds of stuff for that.
I mean, I'm.
I figured since we have to do it, why not see if we can get some mind help?
Yep, yep. I like the priority here. Yep. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so we'll submit this.
Especially the city center plan.
At the deadline to get it over to the counties in the middle of March. So we'll put it on for you to do a motion on this next week and then we'll send it on mid-March.
Thank you. City Administrator?
A couple of things, Mayor. First off, I want to give a shout-out to some people for a situation that happened last week. We were notified that a, a city resident had their E.B.T. card hacked. And in their attempt to find out what happened, we're told by the state that there was nothing the state could do and they were going to be out twenty-one hundred dollars for a month until the middle of March. So that, the family had, they have three kids, one of which goes to attend the academy for blended learning education, the remote school. So that staff at that school began making calls and amongst all of themselves raised three hundred and fifty dollars in about three hours for this family. Contact was made with Ashley at H.P.D. She began assembling people together to not only help in, in providing them some food, but also some clothing that was needed. Brittany Wedd, Wedd at Children in Need also jumped in and helped a lot. And Jerry at Trinity Lutheran Church, the Maryland Food Bank. We went out there Saturday and, and put some bags together for, for the family and delivered them on Saturday. And they were just very appreciative. We're talking with Brooke Grossman as to how this could happen. This isn't the only family that was hacked. Apparently there was a statewide issue with E.B.T. cards getting hacked. This woman was able to track down that the transactions were being made in New York off the C.B.T. card, so. I, it, it's, it's my opinion that for the state to basically turn around and say, hey, sorry, it's your loss, we'll, we'll replenish your funds in, in a month, just not acceptable. So thank Brooke for, for looking into that. But I just want to give a shout-out to those folks. That's, that's one of the things that, having someone like Ashley at H.P.D., she's able to help coordinate that together. That's one of the big pluses we've had with that. So I, I just want to take a, a moment to, to thank them for doing that. And then lastly, on a much sadder note, I want to send on behalf of city staff our deepest condolences to the family of former Fire Chief Gary Hallbaker, who passed away earlier today, to keep Brenda, his wife, and Michael, his son, in their thoughts. Gary was a good guy, one of the first guys that reached out to me twenty years ago when I started downstairs. Got to know Gary very well, not only through his son, son's activities at South High, but also at Hagerstown Suns Games and, of course, in working with him in the fire department. Great loss, and as more becomes available as far as arrangements, I'll let everybody know. That's it for me. Thanks.
Councilwoman McIntyre?
Just really quick, Mayor Martinez and I had the privilege of attending, did you want to say this?
Yeah, this is my only thing.
You can add to it, obviously. But we went to the Frederick Manor Boys and Girls Club and were able to speak with very young children, very young students, probably, and I would say, what, second, third grade, all the way up to, I would, tenth grade. And we also had the president of the Hagerstown Youth Council come. And what we did, we took a spin on the contest, If I Were Mayor. And what we asked them was if they could change anything in the city or if they, what, what did they want to see in their town? What did they want to see in their city? These little children, these little children, their answers. And they had them all, they have papers that I'd like to hang up in our, in our office, actually. And you know what the two things that they said? Number one, homelessness. Number two, they want a transportation in order for them to get to their after-school activities because some of their parents couldn't drive. And it was heart-wrenching and scary because here's these little people that see everything that we see and can't do anything about it, right? It was, first of all, thank you very, very much to the former Hagerstown Youth Council President. She invited us and it was, it was very nice of her to invite us to attend, but it was really, you know, not that we don't see these things all the time, but out of the mouths of babes, you're just like, okay, they see it too. And while we are supposed to always be a good example for our children, they see exactly what we do. And I hope, I hope that when they get to our age, that they don't have these issues anymore. So, anyway, that's all.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Just a quick reminder, Neighborhoods First is having a community cleanup workshop tomorrow at five-thirty at the library. It's a good opportunity for everyone to come, share some ideas about how you can best serve your own neighborhood with cleaning up the surrounding areas, so I encourage everyone to come out tomorrow at five-thirty at the library. That's all. Thank you.
Just want to echo Scott's comments, condolences to the family of Gary Hallbaker. When I played soccer at South High, obviously I went to school with Gary's older children, Tara and Tim. And Coach Hack taught me probably everything I ever learned about playing the goal. And he did it very selflessly every day. And we remained friends, obviously, long after that, his tenure here, and, and so just wishing the best to, to the family.
So I wanted to also echo what Councilwoman McIntyre was saying about the Boys and Girls Club at Frederick Manor. One of the things that I, that really, really I've been sharing that impacted me the most was when I sat down across from the little girl and she said, you're the mayor and your hair looks like mine. And, I mean, for me and for her, that was so powerful, that she was able to connect just from her hair. So thank you, Councilwoman, for inviting me. They made a big old poster and I was just like blown away by all the little people.
We got so many hugs.
All the hugs. I mean, the questions that were asked, I've sat in a room with adults and they didn't, you know, give those types of suggestions. And also one of the things that they said was sidewalks. They said that they, they noticed, and this was a high schooler, they noticed that sidewalks, like, they couldn't walk to the mall or they couldn't walk past, and so having that discussion about the city boundary and those type of things. And he was like, well, if we had sidewalks to be able to get to the mall safely, at least that's something high schoolers would, you know, do. We'd walk there, you know? And so things like that, that never really thought about or put into perspective about what are their barriers to not do the, the thing that they want to do? Sidewalks. Safe way to get to the mall because their parents are at work and can't get them. Yeah, so that was, that was profound. Also, I was down at the Maryland Mayors Association reception at the Governor's House. I just want to say, like, Governor Moore spoke about Hagerstown in such a way that all the mayors made me back up and said that I didn't need any time with him. And Hagerstown didn't need to be, didn't need to be like on his radar because he's been saying it. And so I just think that that's very amazing for us, that we have a governor that is speaking about Hagerstown and about, you know, our former mayor and what's happening now. And also he was playing Hagerstown Napoli over the weekend. How cool is that? And also, thank you to Brittany, Jerry, and Ashley. They do a lot of work, even with the re-entry call-ins. Jerry at Trinity Lutheran being the outreach and Ashley, our community liaison, actually used that location in partnership with the court system and the probation. And they have violent offenders, they come and meet there, and they can go to the food bank afterwards. There's resources there, and so I just, that's part of a team for something else, and I want to shout them out too. And then also my condolences to the Harbaker family. And with that, we are adjourned.
Best mayor ever, one hour.
Did you say best mayor ever?
I said best mayor ever, one hour. I'm all about timing.
I'm still picturing that, that fifty-five inch bucket truck.
Oh, yeah. That is, that is.